We'll call the meeting to order. This is Tuesday, October 18th. And our first matter is a continued public hearing. However, we did not receive the information and documents for the public hearing, so we need to adjourn that. So I guess we need a motion, and apparently we still haven't had it. So what we ought to do is adjourn this, I think, to November 15. Give them time to submit the materials. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing to November 15?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're on a seven second delay, Dick. Okay, we have a resolution. Oh, no, we're gonna hold off on that because the Chapewa Crossing folks wanted to be here for that on their next door. Why don't we take the request for the approval minutes? And then we'll go into the concept plan for Inningwood as we wait for Chapewa Crossing. So we have a request for an extension from the Newcastle Fire Department. As I understand it, there are no issues. They're moving forward, whatever their progress is. And from what I understand, there aren't any objections from staff. And I don't think any from members of the board, but Sabrina, Bob, Dennis, are there any issues?
I have no objection.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have no objection either.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not seeing any objections. Is there a motion to extend?
I have a comment.
Sure.
On page two of four, the third line. It says, "You can allow the head-on servicing of an eight-yard
Dick, we're talking about the
vehicle or truck?" I would say
Dick, that'll be the next one. That's the resolution. We're not doing the Chapewa Resolution right now because they want to be here to be represented. So we jumped ahead to the Newcastle Chapewa Fire Department extension. So that's number four on the agenda. We just jumped ahead. We're jumping around a little bit here to make some progress and then we'll go into some of the media things. So I'm not hearing any objections. Is there a motion to grant the extension that the applicant has sought?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thanks. Carrie for zero. The next item, we do have some minutes here. Pardon?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. You're welcome. We have no time for thanks. We're cruising all on here. Okay, we have the minutes of Tuesday, September 13. Again, I had some minor issues. I'll just slide a moment here afterwards. Nothing substantive. Anyone else? Any questions, issues for the minutes of September 13? If not, is there a motion to adopt those minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got that done?
I abstain.
Okay. Three, zero extension. So we can take now the concept plan. I think Mr., the applicant is here. So we have a concept plan discussion. This is for Sareed, 41 and 47, Inningwood Road. This is an application just to discuss on a concept basis.
Mr. Chairman, I am an abutter to this property. So as a consequence, it's appropriate for me to refuse myself from the discussions on the application, any action on the application. So I'm gonna leave the room during this discussion.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Pam, can you please move Canaan over as a panelist?
Yep.
Thank you.
Does she have to be in the room?
No, she's coming. She's gonna be on a Zoom. She's in Zoom.
Good timing.
And just for record purposes, right now, we do not have a legal forum of the boards and specifically two members of the board that are sitting on this application in person. So no decisions can be made. We can have a discussion, but I just want to note for the record, you know, no actions or decisions can be made on the on the on the concept plan.
Yep, right. Well, those decisions wouldn't be made anyway.
But that's fine because the four of us who are exactly are gonna be talking about are able to have a conversation anyway.
Yep.
Yep, perfect.
Super good. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well, just to discuss and get some ideas.
Do you want to tell us about the proposal and we'll take it from there?
Sure, absolutely. I'm here with the client, Nezzy Sareed, and the architects here as well to answer those questions. His name is Gary Siegel. Let me just, I'll bring up the property on my screen. So everybody could see the existing property.
It's up.
Okay, so this is the primary residence circling. This is 47 Inningwood Road. The client also owns 41 Inningwood Road, and they also own 39 Inningwood Road. The proposed addition, it will be on 47 Inningwood Road. Just wanna go to the concept plan. Second. So we're proposing an addition. I guess I'll let the architect go further on that. I'll just kind of talk a little bit about the site itself. But the addition will house a pool, some living area, and there'll also be a car. I think it's called a car facility here, a new car. There's a name for it. Nezzy? But I guess it's a fancy garage, and what we're looking to do is potentially take the driveway off of the existing gravel driveway on 39 Inningwood. But doing this, we're trying to look at ways to keep the proposed driveway on the property for the main residence. So we would look to potentially shift the property lines where this is the existing, and we would look to incorporate this piece into our site. And we figure if we're gonna go down that road, we will work to create a conforming use off this barn because right now it's non-conforming. So that's why we kicked this property line, show and kick there, to create that side yard setback. We would need to come in for wetland application, wetland permit, tree permit, site plan approval. And I'm not too sure about the slopes. We're not disturbing too much, but once we get into the grading, I'll know a little bit more because we're right there on the cusp. This is the existing dwelling. Part of the existing dwelling would be incorporated in the footprint of the proposed addition, and then the addition. Does anybody have any? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Will the existing garage stay even though you're gonna have a place to park a bunch of cars elsewhere?
Yeah, that's, I'm just, sorry, give me one sec. I just wanna get the correct name for it. It's a new car collection den. That's the words I was looking for. So this will just be for new, new, new nice cars, sports cars. This is the main garage in the residence. And you'll understand a little more once I bring up the architecturals. You can kind of get a look at that. I just wanted to kind of cover the site itself. The existing septic is located where the proposed addition would be, so we are now looking at potential septic areas in this location or potentially this location. And further down the road, we're gonna have to find some stormwater treatment areas as well. I will bring up the, does anybody have any questions on the site plan before I bring up the architecturals?
Before you bring up the architecturals, can you zoom out and show the all of the properties?
So these, I'll go to the existing because you can kind of see the overall.
Thank you.
These are the three properties. That is the main residence. There's a residence on this. This is a vacant parcel.
So 41 is a landlocked parcel at this point?
Correct, yes, but it's vacant. And then if I go
Can you, can you again show us what you're proposing for the change or the potential change in lot lines? And again, the reasoning for that? I heard something about the driveway and do you keep it on the same property, I guess?
Yeah, we're looking to get that alternate driveway, most of it onto this property. Now, I will mention going this route will require ZBA approval for a variance for coverage count and building count.
Do we have any idea how much you're over on each of those?
I believe it is, I believe one of them was. Yeah, so one of them looks about 5,000 square feet, and I believe the building's about 8,000. I'm sorry, the development's about 8,000. The building is about 5,000 square feet.
Why do you need a variance for coverage? You have an entire vacant lot and you're moving lot lines. So my question is, has thought been given to moving the lot lines such that you're not at variance with the coverage, right?
The problem is we can't remove it any more than the minimum requirement of a two-acre zoning. And it's my understanding that the client wants to keep this property separate.
So you minimized it to two acres?
Well, we minimized it to 3.9 because regardless, I guess we couldn't get it. We could potentially talk about removing, you know, shifting it to the minimum.
Sorry, but there's a big difference between two and 3.9, right?
Yes, 1.9 acres.
I wasn't asking for that. My point is, if you move the line a little bit, you'll still be very far from the two-acre minimum and still maybe not have to request
As much.
The variance.
No, I'm sorry. I looked at that. If I got rid of that extra 1.9, it still does not cover our coverage.
So again, how much are you over?
That sounds like you'd be over massively.
Yeah, it doesn't sound, it sounds like the delta is very significant.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Yeah, so like I said, it's 8,000 for development and 5,000 for building.
So that's the delta that's over the coverage limits?
Yeah.
How much are we over?
That's what I'm saying, about eight here. I'll just zoom in so you can kind of see what I'm saying. Yeah, so this is, you could see on the building coverage, 11,280 is the max, and then 16,184 is what we have. And the development is 32,491 max, and we're at 40,000.
Okay.
I could talk to the client and see if we can make that number better. If we do, you know, minimize that lot to the two acres, we might be able to get that down a bit, but it's not gonna get us to where we need to be.
Okay.
Does he intend to, I mean, I know it's not ultimately all that relevant long-term. Does he intend, the short-term intent to keep ownership over the three lots?
That's correct, yes.
And then the driveway, can you, can you go back to the driveway piece? How is the existing home accessed now?
It's accessed off of Inningwood Road. I'll go back to the existing plan.
Got it.
Do you intend to keep that as well?
Yes. So there would be, there would be an easement required over 39 for that little piece of driveway that crosses over.
Unless you move the line.
Unless we move the line. But then, but then what's gonna happen is your line's gonna be right on the border of 39. You probably still want a buffer there.
You're gonna end up in a common driveway situation.
Correct.
Yeah, Anthony, so sorry to interrupt you, but I mean, if you're gonna need a driveway over someone else's property, assuming they both own it now, I would imagine, I'll defer to Jen on this, you're still gonna need a common driveway easement going all the way down to Inningwood, not just the way it comes into the driveway. Because he could sell the lots and then someone won't have access over that property. So you're gonna need a common driveway easement over the entire length. Jen, am I correct to assume that?
You are correct, Mr. Seoli.
And you'll have to, you'll have to figure in, in your development coverage, the common driveway.
That's a good point, Sabrina.
Really? For the lot, even though you're not building it on the lot?
Yep. So you may want to erase that line altogether.
And the only way I could see it working is if they made it all into one parcel. And then put a binder on that you can't subdivide without coming back to us.
I mean, I think one of the things that we probably would be looking at anyways, no matter what ends up being the remainder at 41 Inningwood, we would probably put such a stipulation in the site plan that 41 would not be eligible for development.
Now, given the ponds and everything, you're gonna be, some things are gonna look like they're gonna be in the wetland setback.
Yes, that's
Sort of mentioned that before.
Yeah, we would need a wetland permit for the work, absolutely.
Well, virtually, Dick, virtually all of the activity in terms of building and garage, et cetera, I think would be within the wetland setback. It's a very substantial impact. I mean, we don't have information yet about the wetland, but it seems to me Dennis can weigh in on this. But it seems to me that this would be something that we would want to refer to ERB. And it seems to me that this would be something that we would want to see a functional wetland analysis to see what, what this pond and stream, what they're really doing, their importance, et cetera. In view of such a large incursion in the buffer.
The other, the other thing is that, don't forget, we have to, we have to have a viewshed analysis also. The building, I've tried to figure out the height of the building, but it seems like the midpoint of the roof is 35 feet off ground or very close to it. But still, I mean, it's gonna be a big structure compared to what is there now. And all the neighbors, you know, we want to see how it impacts their viewshed. On another issue, the, let me see, you're looking to put the new septic system. Where?
Well, these are two potential areas that we're looking at right now. We're testing the soils. We're not there yet, but we wanted to just show around about where we're thinking.
Yeah, the upper, the upper one, of course, creates fewer problems. The lower one is in the, you know, the setback, you know, from the ponds. The good news is, you know, that if you do the upper one, you're farther away from the ponds. And so therefore, it's an improvement over where the existing facility is, which I think is really closer to the pond, isn't it?
Yeah. The existing facility is right below this addition right here.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no, sorry. Here's the square. You can almost see that square outline right there.
Okay, so the upper one gets you farther away from a, keeping the water quality in the pond better. It has more length to get treatment as it trickles underground towards the ponds. Unless, of course, somehow the grade changes in the upper area. I can't read the numbers, so this
They're both about the same slope, yeah.
Okay. So it's all sloping from, it's all sloping towards the building then, right?
It's sloping, what would I say? Let me, in my north hour here. It's sloping south.
Okay.
Along this way.
Yeah, and so is the other one, the existing one. And that's the only improvement I see.
Exactly, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Moving the septic field is, it away and out of the buffer zone is a good thing.
Yep.
Yeah, I encourage you to take a look at the soils there first and foremost. It would be great if you found good soil there, kept it out of the buffer. Can we see the architectural, please?
Absolutely. If you give me one sec.
Well, also Dennis, are you there? Is Dennis there? Maybe he's muted. Muted?
Gary, let me know if you want me to flip to any specific plan.
Hello, I'm here.
How you doing?
Okay, um, yeah, the one, and I'm not even really gonna talk wetlands because I, you know, I was looking at, you know, the ERB-approved application for the dredging just to, you know, sort of get some scope and scale. So on those drawings, it was shown, and I don't know what DEP's involvement would be, but doesn't the Crote and Aqueduct run across one of these properties?
That's right, Dennis. It runs right through here.
Yeah. Good point, Dennis.
So if you're gonna propose a driveway and a septic over that, they may have no issue, but I'm not with the DEP, so I figured that's just something you'd have to probably vet with them.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's funny when I spoke to them because when we put the spoils above it, they had said it's extremely, extremely deep. But, you know, I was talking to them about putting spoils, not a driveway and a septic by it. So, yeah, I would definitely reach out to them.
Okay.
Dennis, based on your experience, what would you expect the reception of the application might be with the ARB as referred to them?
I have to admit, I don't have much experience when it comes to fighting new septics, you know, over the aqueduct. I mean, obviously, you know, to Tony's point, yeah, I mean, it's something that, you know, is over. I just, you know, in terms of accessibility, in terms of, you know, because I know that you were running a little, running into some of that for, when the application was being proposed for, oh, why can't I think of the name of it now? Twin Ridges. I know they were just concerned about access to a particular shaft point. I know that becomes a bigger deal and worrying about the aqueduct. I just figured to cover the sides of Newcastle, we just want to make sure that we're, you know, in communication with DEP, that's all.
Well, what I was, what I was asking was kind of driving it was, we have an application here for, you know, a good deal of activity within the wetland buffer, including a second pool, et cetera.
What's the history? What do you normally see from ERB? We haven't referred something to them in a while, so we haven't seen one of their reports.
But you're dealing with them all the time, so what might be the issues here?
I'm sorry, my misunderstanding. Um, yeah, the ERB is pretty strong about advocating for no pools within the wetland buffer. And I'll say in-ground. I think there was an instance where they ended up receiving an in-ground pool application that turned into an above-ground pool, and that they were willing to approve. And this is kind of a unique situation because, I mean, I know it's an indoor pool, but you already have an existing pool in the wetlands buffer, and they're certainly gonna not gloss over that. They're not gonna, you know, require, I mean, it's, you know, it's pre-existing, presumably it has a C of O, it's all legal. But it's definitely gonna be a consideration when they, you know, start discussing and considering, you know, additional impacts in a cumulative fashion. So I think that's gonna be one. The other is, you know, with respect to that dredging that was completed for the pond. I had seen from the minutes that were adopted from a meeting in April of 2019, which was before I started. So, you know, you had established sort of this mitigation, you know, a couple of no-mo zones. One was sort of at the northern end of the pond, the other sort of at the, at the southern end. And, you know, from the, from the plans that, you know, were submitted that shows those no-mo zones, you're kind of stepping on your mitigation with the proposed addition and the terrace because it's covering, encompassing, shading, whatever words you want to use, what was supposed to be that designated mitigation area for permit number, I wrote it down, 2018-07, that was issued by me on December 5th of 2019. So, so to propose a project that is already sort of canceling out mitigation from a prior application that was approved, that's gonna get convoluted quickly, you know? So that's just another consideration that is gonna be brought up, you know, if this is referred to the, to the ERB. And then, of course, as you know, in the environmental protection overlay, when it comes to those, you know, mitigation calculations, you know, things are increased to, you know, two to one for wetlands and one and a half to one for the, for the buffer. So So there's a lot of like stepping on stepping, on stepping, but, you know, it's sort of, you know, that's going through my mind as I'm sort of, you know, you know, looking at this just from a, from a concept level.
Are we going pretty far away from the pond, Gary, and this, this is not really representative? And the mitigation zones already will be, the no-mo zones already we are complying, and then the pool, the elliptical structure is showing closer than what's actually going to be.
It's touching, I mean. But from the image that's on the screen now, it looks like the proposed structure is as close to the pond as possible. In fact, it looks like some of it is in the pond.
Yeah, that's not, that's, that's not going to be the case. I don't know. This is something
I think, I think we should, we should look at the architectural layouts, and then everyone would understand this shape that
Even before you get to that, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry, even before you get to that. So whether it's in the pond, over the pond, offset a couple feet from the pond, in essence, at the end of the day, and this is, you know, gonna be the mitigation issue that I see. You're in essence eliminating shoreline of, of an open water area. You're certainly eliminating access to it. You know, I mean, I know there's an existing house there, so I'm not speaking to that, but you're sort of adding to the shoreline impacts of an existing, you know, open water system. And, you know, obviously, you know, that, that serves as a source, you know, from, I'm sure wildlife, you know, to access and whatnot. And so you're just, you're sort of like cutting off more. I know that a lot of the area from having visited the property is, you know, is probably maintained as turf cover. So I know that you're not, you know, that, you know, really none of that pond has sort of that protected edge, as I like to call it, that, you know, necessarily would promote other, other activities and in forms of wildlife. But that open edge, you know, does serve, when something's thirsty, you know, they're gonna, you know, potentially access that. So it's, it's difficult for me to sort of conceive of what mitigation plan is there to create more shoreline. Because that would be the in-kind proposal if you're in essence eliminating shoreline. So that's, again, just conceptually, you know, I, I see the ERB, you know, and myself sort of, you know, going over that and discussing that.
Yeah, I agree with Dennis. It's too mu, it's a really big ask. I've never seen one really that's this far into the, the wetland buffer, not to mention kissing the pond. Nah, it's just, it's just too much. Maybe if you flip the, the new building way in the back and get farther away from the pond, and hopefully, you know, if you get down into the, the lower right-hand corner more with the building, maybe some of that comes out of the wetland setback, and then maybe we could talk about it. Or at least, I would be willing to talk about that, maybe. But the way this is, too many, too, big, too big an ask.
Well, one of the other things, Anthony, just before we look at the architectures, in consideration some of the, there's, there's a lot of asking here. There's a lot of uphill in here. And one other thing might be to look at a relocation of the, you know, the garage and even the pool. And maybe closer up to 41 Inningwood and out of the buffer altogether. Then it's almost as a matter of right, and, you know, as long as you're providing zoning, et cetera. But I just fear that this is gonna be a big problem, a big issue for you, expensive for you. Because we will want to see an analysis of the wetland functions, and that's not just wildlife, but in terms of what happens in terms of flooding, erosion control, et cetera, how it works with the entire system of this area. Because it's my understanding, I've been to the property or near the property, it operates, you know, as a, it's been dammed up, but really is a, an entire system. Does this eventually go to the Indian River reservoir, Indian reservoir, or is it just going eventually to the Hudson? I don't know what the watershed is here, if it stops off on the way.
I wanna say Hudson, but I really wanna look at it first just to, you know, for a clear answer, off the top of my head, yeah. Could be wrong, though.
Yep, but that's one of the things that, you know, obviously we need to understand. I mean, if it's something that is going into a public drinking system, it's, it's gonna make things a little bit more difficult.
And the uses proposed for the new structure are just pool and new car then?
This, this, yeah. Going to flip through the architectures?
Sure.
Okay. So here's, this is just an overall of the architectural plan? Foundation. What do you, what do you want me to go, Gary, first floor?
Uh, yeah, I think that would, because these are just, uh,
Foundation.
Foundations. But, uh, what I want to mention is that based on, uh, my site measurements, and I don't hold myself to be a land surveyor or, uh, uh, anything that would be perfectly accurate about my measurements on site. But the reality is that there will be, uh, several, several feet, maybe twenty, maybe thirty feet between the footprint of the building uh, and the, the actual contour of the pond. Now, the pond is shown on the site plan to whatever theoretic contour, but that should be checked out on the site if that is correct, the way the pond is shown, because we all know that any water course changes the footprint or the route. And, uh, uh, should, should be checked it out. But, um, nevertheless, as you could see, the contour of the terrace, it sits on, uh, some columns, which, uh, as needed, could be less, uh, uh, spaced or, uh, uh, further away one from the other one as needed to create less interference with the existing, uh, either wetland or, uh, pond contour. Now, to go inside a building, um, you could see is a pool. Yes, is a indoor pool design. Um, there is a game room, um, uh, where you may say a, uh, greenhouse type of enclosure between the existing house and the pool area. Um, we have some mechanical rooms, bathrooms. As I would say, the typical, the typical thing that you have for a, for a pool. Um, and, um, yeah, the way, the way actually is designed, and I will even, um, uh, make a parenthesis with, uh, with this presentation. And, uh, I don't know, do, do you all see my face?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to put here in front of me.
I could put that off, Gary, if you want.
I don't know if you, uh, see the whole view, but it is actually a, a view. Yes, uh, you have it there. That is the side view. I'm, I'm drawing your attention to the lower, um, drawing where it is actually one-story construction as it is, uh, facing north, I say west, northwest area towards the, the other properties. Let's, let's call it that way, towards the driveway, the, the new driveway. So it is a one-story construction. Um, and the other, the other view shows how actually I tried to inscribe the pool area with the, which I would call it the basement area, where the pool is going to be and the first floor area or the upper floor, um, with the, with the existing topography of the land. So the reason actually, uh, maybe the construction appears to be, uh, big is because compared with the existing house, um, the existing house, as you could see even on the site plan, it's not that big. The existing house, it is actually, uh, not bigger than, uh, your typical, uh, four, four, five bedrooms house. And then it has detached garages. With those garages that are existing today, they're not to say that convenient. Uh, they are made into many garage, many, uh, cars parking. You could probably park four or five cars. But, uh, the thing is, you have a nice walk in the winter between the garage and the house, not exactly the most desirable way. Now, this what we're building now, uh, should be classified as a luxury addition to any house, uh, to have a spacious garage, uh, design in such a way that, uh, looks like, uh, maybe, uh, a nice, uh, ballroom. But the thing is, as a functionality, finally, the house gets an attached garage. And then to have, uh, an indoor pool, not such a, uh, tremendous unusual thing. Um, so many houses we know, and I'm sure any of us, we have some maybe a little bit, uh, better situated friend who has an indoor pool. So, um, this family has, it's a growing family, has, uh, little kids and eventually expecting more kids and more members of the family actually to move and live together. And so the indoor pool is not actually, uh, a, um, how should I say, uh, completely, um, completely for a, uh, uh, just a, uh, choice in a nice, uh, winter day. It is to say a very nice, uh, addition to the rather medium-sized house that's existing. And we try everything that we do to observe the existing topography, so the excavation to be at minimum. Now, I heard some, um, suggestions to move the whole thing in some area of the property. And I just want to point it that at that point, if we move it, it's going to appear as a full two-story tall, uh, construction, even if we comply with all the setbacks and so on. And if I want to, uh, look from a completely different point of view and say, maybe I convince my client to attach the other property, to make it one property, to move this whole addition away from the pond, to be somewhere like, uh, someone pointed up the hill, because it's actually going up the hill if we move it in that direction. All of the sudden, we eliminate many, many, um, encroachments and variances possible, needed. But all of the sudden, now we cannot stop this individual, I call it that way, my client, to build it. Because he doesn't need many of all these variances and God knows, maybe we able to decide to eliminate the need of any variance, the need of any uh, Environmental Protection Agency approval. So all of the sudden, we can just go to the zoning department, that would be you, and say, here we are, we have a proposal, complies with everything, and then go to get a building permit and build it. But guess what? I think the result will be detrimental. I, I think the result, I, I shouldn't say detrimental, I should say it will be a lot more unpleasant, a lot more impacting visually with the existing nature, with the existing site, the, the scape. You see, I happen to be also a, uh, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Um, and, uh, probably it's just a formality to get it, uh, uh, maybe validated in the state of New York. Like I have my license in New York State, New Jersey, Connecticut, and actually North Carolina. But what I'm pointing is I'm looking indeed as a professional planner to the site scape. And I feel that even though, uh, the, I, the aesthetics, the look of the new addition does not match the existing house. Uh, but it is the least impact to the existing visual of the sign, most likely hardly visible from the street. We know that. I mean, we can, we can drive up and down eating road as much as we want. We won't be able to see much of this building because if you look to the shape of the roof, and we can bring the other drawing if you wish, uh, Tony, uh, but the shapes of the roof are rather on the flat side compared with the existing house that has quite steep roofs. So even though the architects are required to show a orthogonal view, how I like to explain in a layman's word, uh, for my clients, as I would be climbing on a tree and looking to the house. So I see the roof actually in the full height. But if we all know that the tangent of your eye will kind of be stopped by the line of the eve, the roof eve, the fascia of the roof, you're hardly going to see much of the roof that you see in my drawings. So it will end up to be a lot of glass first floor, something that looks more like a greenhouse, maybe a fancy greenhouse, if you want to call it that way. The basement where, where the, um, uh, the pool is, it will be somewhere way back recessed hidden by the, the, um, the topography of the land. And if we all go and I don't mind to meet, uh, with the site engineers and uh, land surveyors and whoever needs to be to do accurate plotting of, uh, this design, I promise that will not be any, uh, stepping into the water of the pond. Um, not even for the columns that are supporting the terrace. And if we end up to be, or if I, if we end up, if I end up to be wrong, uh, definitely will have to adjust it. I have no, uh, no issue with that. The only thing I'm trying to prevent for all of us not to have this idea that, oh, we have a lot of land, because it is a lot of land when we look on the plot plan. But this lot of land is not really appropriate for, neither for the functionality of this addition, the intent of the usage. Uh, uh, we, we, we're not trying to do a sort of, uh, uh, covered corridor that is going to be three hundred foot long to get to a enclosed, uh, to an indoor pool and, and create some sort of a connection with a pavilion outside the house. Um, so I'm trying for the functionality to keep it, uh, as close as possible to the existing house. Second, to inscribe in the existing topography. Third, to impact the least the existing wetland and, um, looking to the contour of the existing pond. And thinking that we are actually blocking shoreline. I mean, everything that we do here, it has a, uh, round contour that touches the pond, which is also a round contour. And we know that two circles, if they kiss each other to repeat the same expression that was used before, it will be merely one dot. And we are aiming towards that. I do not intend to overlap this construction to the existing pond, not at all. Actually, we consider the pond the best feature of this, uh, property. We don't want to cover it and we don't want to shade it even with, uh, anything that's being proposed here. So this is a nutshell to talk about the few aspects that we all looked at it. And I'm, I'm open for any, uh, questions now, if there's anything that I missed.
Well, uh, I mean, I think we had a discussion about, uh, the site plan and site plan challenges previously. I, I, you know, I understand what you're saying in terms of functionality. But, uh, the functionality ultimately is a garage and a indoor pool, a very large indoor pool. It's a seventy-foot-long pool. So, um, that functionality could be performed, not necessarily right here. Um, you're, you're talking about convenience and you, you, you made some sort of statement about, uh, trying to minimize the impact of the wetland. Uh, I, I can't imagine, uh, a location where you, where you could maximize it any more than what you've done here. So, and, and the, the rest of the property has got grade that works up. So the working with the grade could probably occur you know, in other areas, um, perhaps further right, even if you put the new addition perhaps further just back to the, um, uh, northwest and, and, and spin it that much further away from the pond, even that might help. Uh, we'd have to take a look and see what are the, the existing stream is, if that's feeding the pond, I presume it is. It's probably piped underneath the house to get to the pond, but maybe not. So we, we need to look at that. Um, but the, the issue is, we, I certainly can appreciate the, uh, the, the functionality that you're looking for and the convenience. But in the end, uh, we have to measure this against, uh, what the town has gotten for laws and regulations. And there are certain thresholds that have to be met in order to grant these kinds of permits. And I would suggest that, uh, it's, it's going to be a tough one to, to, to meet when the request is for a garage and an indoor swimming pool, a second pool, but it's indoors. I, we understand that. That's, that's fine. Um, and it's not to say that we, you know, we have no, I don't think we have any say whatsoever in terms of what you do and how you do it on your property, except within those, those areas where we have jurisdiction. And, uh, and, and I, I suspect that the coverage issue is going to be very substantial. Uh, it's going to be an uphill situation for, for you. You're going to have to really justify that to, to this board and probably even to the zoning board if it gets past us. And then you're going to have to, uh, work with the ERB and the, uh, the environmental coordinator on, on these wetland issues. Um, I don't think the DEP sounds like it'll be very difficult. We, we need to know what's going on with this wetland. It may be that based on the functional analysis that the wetland is not terribly critical. I don't know how that might be, but it's possible. But that will be up to, to your experts to say. But, um, the, the request for convenience and functionality, uh, just by itself, probably, uh, uh, may not be sufficient to offset the, the challenges that you have for coverage and, and, um, uh, the wetland issues. I have no idea what the tree issues are. I'm sure we can, those can be resolved, uh, mitigated. But as we heard from Dennis, uh, what the ERB normally likes to look for, for mitigation for a pond, and, and this particular pond, having looked at it before, um, it, it's going to be very, very difficult to meet with this particular proposal. Um, it, it just seems to me that, uh, and I understand it's, it's more distant, but there's grade here, uh, on this entire property where you can work with the grade to keep the pool down low and, and have your, your, your roof and your garage in another area, maybe shorten these driveways, which will help with the coverage issues as well. So, um, I, I know it's not what you want to hear, but I think the reason that we're having this concept plan is for you to hear the sort of challenges that, uh, in, in, uh, issues, uh, that you can anticipate. Um, and, uh, you've heard at least from one board member saying that this is a big ask as it's proposed at this point. That's just one person. But I think there's a sense that this would be a big ask as it stands at, at this time in, in this configuration. Not impossible, it's just a big ask.
Can, can, can I suggest one, one thing as a, um, as a sort of a very early indicator is just sort of putting onto your architectural, uh, drawings. I see it now with the pond, et cetera, but I think it would help for you to almost, uh, track all the lines that are required by law in terms of, you know, um, staying away from the pond, et cetera. I mean, and that itself is going to inform your, your design decision a little bit. Um, so currently, you know, you're not necessarily seeing that because you're. because you, you're not, you don't necessarily have all those lines mapped out in terms of the, you know, the distance from the pond, the, you know, the wetland areas, all of that. If you put them on your architectural drawings, separate from your, you know, just your initial site plans, you're gonna see a better picture. And I do, I do agree with Bob that, you know, this is gonna be a heavy lift for you, not, not in terms of the architectural, I mean, we're not commenting on the architectural side of things at all. It's really about how you mitigate the location with respect to the water body.
I have, I have a comment if I could.
Sure.
A question first, how are you gonna deal with the stormwater that would occur in a flash kind of situation when you're gonna have a macadam driveway and a hundred and fifty percent increase of building? Because you have a pond and it, and if you put too much water too fast into the pond and you don't let it percolate at least some of it into the ground, then you're gonna have a increased level of water in the pond, which could result in flooding of the, of it, of the, the house next door and potentially get to the street too. So there's another issue.
Yeah, we would definitely look at that, definitely look at that. We would have to treat it. We couldn't send it straight to the pond. So we, all the roof leaders and the, the driveway would have to go to a, a treatment system.
I have a question, Tony, when, how long ago or how recent are the contour of the pond taken?
Well, this, I think the confusion from your plan is mine, is mine shows the wetland boundary. Yours probably shows-
That's why I'm pointing, that is not a pond. I mean, I want everyone to know that where it says pond and it shows a contour, it's not actually the pond, it's maybe the contour of the wetland, which makes a huge difference if that's the situation. I don't know myself, but because-
We have to be careful though, because you know, wetlands is defined during a high watermark.
Yeah.
Right, don't worry about type of, this is Dennis speaking, don't worry about type of wetland. Don't worry about, you know, what its classification is. In terms of, you know, the regulations, the wetland is the wetland is the wetland. So that, those are the impacts that, you know, that you try to avoid. If you cannot avoid them, then you're gonna need to minimize them. And one of the ways that, you know, you show that you're minimizing them is through an alternatives analysis. Right now, again, because you're at a concept plan stage, you're showing your preferred alternative, that's fine. But you're gonna need to sort of, you know, come up with some other alternatives that either A, work better in terms of, you know, avoiding or minimizing impacts to wetlands, or B, justifies that this location is indeed the most practicable alternative for your proposal that is also, you know, the least impactful to wetlands. And then of course, there's avoidance. After, after all those first two steps are achieved, then we speak to, okay, how do we mitigate for these permanent impacts? These losses, if you will, you know, to the, to the wetlands. Again, not the shoreline edge, not the open water, the wetlands.
Exactly to follow the line of your guidance and, and I like it very much what, what you pointed. My approach to this design, it is actually following the points you said. Because probably without necessarily being an architect, we all could imagine that the neck, the connection between the new addition and the existing house can be potentially extended so the oval moves away from the wetland. And that, that will be one way to do it. Now, let's think how that will, or what is the, the minus of that? The plus is that we will be away from the wetlands and that is a plus. The minus is that the coverage is increased. I mean, the land, the impervious area is increased by that neck extension. Second, we losing the use of the natural topography, which has a steeper, steeper drop in the area where now I'm, I'm locating it. Therefore resulting if I push it further towards the driveway, like you said, somebody said the driveway will be shorter, but the actual construction will be longer. So it's not real, it's actually, I would say-
These, these are the things that you're gonna have to work out, obviously.
Yeah.
First of all, wetland's gonna have to be, Anthony, has it actually been delineated yet by a wetland inspector?
This was the, 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 the pink line I show was delineated, I could be wrong, I think it was back in two thousand eight.
So it has to be delineated anyway at this point, because that, that doesn't matter, we have to have it within a year of, of the application, so.
Was it two thousand eight when the Sandy hurricane was? I don't remember the day, the year.
It's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be done by, you know, a licensed engineer or surveyor and then they will know exactly where the lines are. And then you, you got some information here on grades, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to try to, you know, we're not gonna be able to solve this, this problem for you. What we've done in this concept plan is, discussion is just laid out the issues that we identify with this particular layout. We leave it to you to, to resolve and solve the, the problem. You've got problems here, we understand that, we understand what you'd like to do. We're not, you know-
Yeah, can, can I say something? I understand, and I think it's the discussion going. There were three options when I started the concert discuss with, with David from the engineering. There is the existing, yeah. We have an existing house here and we have an existing garage, detached garage. Initially, I want to build a swimming pool behind the house, like an extension of the existing garage. Will be far away from the pond. It could have been an elevated swimming pool also, just to minimize the interference and staying away from the pond. But the problem was there's a stream going underneath, between the existing garage and then the, the existing house. So these are the challenges we have. If we build an elevated swimming pool, is it going to be a kind of more, is easier to, to mitigate all these questions that you have?
I, I, I don't know, we have to see the plan, and again-
Yeah, I understand, no, conceptually, it's just you told you, you told, I, I understand you're talking about the concepts here.
Yeah, I, I think conceptually, just as a starting point, again echoing what we heard from Dennis before, a second pool within the wetland buffer in, in this, this is, you know, wetland buffer in a special area is a problem for them. And if they come back with a strong recommendation that we don't see that this is a, a need that offsets the importance of the public policy behind the, the wetland regulation, it's gonna be tough. So it's a balancing act and, and I don't think we have any particular answers or solutions, but we're, we're certainly, we wanna help you and work with you to, to resolve this so that, you know, you can do what you want to do, but within the regulations that we're charged to, to, to employ, that the town has approved.
I, I, I understand that totally, so instead of wasting our, your time and our time, just I want to direct the conversation to a more productive avenue here. So that was my initial approach to have an elevator. So when you have an elevated swimming pool and the garages was not, and the second driveway, I may not even need it. I can use the existing driveway on forty seven and just have the, some additional garage there.
Yeah.
With, with that, and that, that will solve all the problems, I think. Just since we are discussing the concept, I want to have your-
I, I, I certainly think it's, it's, it's a better, it's a step in the right direction.
It reduces some of the concerns, that's for sure.
But when you, when you see, as we're seeing here, and again, they have to be reconfirmed, the issue that we have is this whole buffer, this whole area, I mean, all your stuff, all your construction now predates this, so it's perfectly fine. But for new construction, all the stuff is within this one hundred fifty foot buffer and that's, that's the issue. That there's obviously the further the way and, and the, and the more upland your, your operations are, your, your construction is, the less impact even in the buffer area, so we can, we can certainly look at that and measure that. But that might be a, a suitable alternative to, to move it backward, you know, more toward the, what is it, almost to the north, behind the house instead of along the pond. It certainly reduces it.
Just have to watch, because we got wetlands here as well.
Yes, I understand, again, you know, again, that's why this, this functional analysis of the, of this wetland system is gonna be important to know what, what this thing really is doing. So as we just heard, as, as I kinda guessed before, this, this stream does flow into this pond, it just goes, you know, it's, it's below the surface and piped.
Yeah, I'll bet, you know, the, the other, the existing stream that you're just mentioning, we'd like to see where the setback is, the wetland setback is for that other pink area.
Well, that's, that's back here, it does come through here. So this line actually, this line supersedes the streamline because the wetland comes out to here.
Right.
Sure.
And I presume that to the-
Then is this a setback or is this a pond?
This is a wetland. There is a pond further back in this area, but back in here is a wetland. This, these two are definitely ponds.
Yeah, okay, so this is a wetland with a pond somewhere, but it needs a setback and to see if there's any land that would be easier to build on to keep, you know, our approach to things like this equal to others. And we don't set precedents which are gonna be devastating in certain areas if people, you know, are able to, to build right in the wetland or right next to the wetland as opposed to next to the boundary, you know, for the wetland background there, and for the red line, so.
Do you wanna weigh in on, a little bit more on the coverage, just so that they have a better feel of, of, of that issue?
Yeah, and, and so, you know, there's a lot of coverage on the lot as it's drawn. You know, with the proposed addition, it, it's really, there's a lot of overage, particularly adding another driveway. I think that you need to look at the best functionality for the individual lot with the minimum amount of coverage that you can do. So, you know, if you're looking for a redesign and attaching onto the existing garage, you know, that might be better than creating a whole other driveway that's coming, you know, around the property. The other alternative is to, is to really remove the lot line on that, on the landlocked lot. You know, it, it is not developable at this time because it is landlocked and you might as well take advantage of the extra area to balance out your coverage requirements.
Okay.
Bob, I don't know, I, I don't know if you want me to add anything else, but-
No, I think that's, that's good. I mean, I think that's, you know, I think it gives Anthony and, and the architects some information that's, that's helpful. Good. All right, are there any other questions at this point? If not, we'll just, you know, look forward to when you rethink this and come back with another application. We'll be happy to have staff look at it, work on it with you folks and then schedule for a meeting when it gets, when we're at that point.
All right, well, I appreciate your time, appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Yeah, we're happy, Anthony, to, to do another pre-app meeting or two, you know, depending on how you guys feel. No worries, we're here to help you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Bye bye, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Yep. So I guess we'll find Tom and see if he's here. Officially, in care of Chaparral Crossing.
I have a question, how come, how come Bob and, and Eldad and, and Tom are sitting so far away that we can't see what they're doing, you know, no, if they had hand signals or something like-
They are, they are unmasked.
If they were moving forward-
You have to, you have to pin, you have to pin that view and then you'll see them, very good.
Yeah, Canaan, you're in the right place at the right time.
I thought you would consider this a blessing, Dick.
Oh my God, Tom.
Okay, so we're back and we're now official and we can, we can take some official action here. So our next item is a resolution. This is on Chaparral Crossing, four hundred eighty Bedford Road. This is the application for a site development plan, the amendment of, for the installation of garbage receptacles. We go from the heights to the, to the garbage.
So, good evening and thank you for taking us a little bit later to come here. So Dan Cola from Del Bello Denon and Wine Garden for the applicant and also online is Mark Grads and I'm not sure Dave Walsh is still with us.
Yes, I am, yep.
Tonight, okay, great. So what, we have, we have taken a look at the, at the resolution and we appreciate all your efforts in putting this together. We did have a couple of small comments. If, if we can just go through those with you tonight, that would be great. So the, the first thing, and I think some of them have, have been addressed, but one item I wanted to bring to your attention was the condition number five of the resolution, which I believe has been amended to, or has been revised to state that in the event the applicant or the town determines that the trash receptacles impacted availability of parking on site, then parking analysis will be conducted. I was hoping that you could clarify with the town, is there an official of the town of the wind inspector? Or, I mean, it would, you know, just a very general term, I didn't know if that-
It would, it would be, it would be any, the, the genesis is that the town may receive comments regarding lack of parking, you know, and it could come in through the town clerk's office, it could come into the building department, you know, the, you know, when people complain, they'll send emails to the town board, however it may be. But, you know, we, I didn't wanna be as specific to say if the building inspector determines because, you know, the comments come in and they usually get funneled to a department head.
Okay, and so how would the applicant then become aware with this then just be?
We would work with, we would work with the applicant. Yeah, it, it's more of, it's more of if, if we get the complaints and we go out there, we wouldn't do anything without speaking with the applicant. And talking to them about it.
So Sabrina, I think you're suggesting that there would, there would be a vetting process
Yes.
through probably your department, so that in the event that, say, a member of the public submitted a complaint or a comment, that wouldn't just be immediately forward as an indication of-
No, not at all.
It's gonna be vetted through your department and then
Right.
your department would be in contact with the applicant if there is an issue that needs to be addressed.
Right, a complaint around Thanksgiving doesn't mean we need to do a parking study.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think, you know, we just wanted some predictability there, so that was, okay, I, I appreciate that. And then, you know, just a couple of small items, which I just noticed and I apologize, which is on the, the fourth whereas and the fifth whereas pauses, it's twelve feet by seventeen feet, not inches. So I don't know if that can just be easily addressed.
That's a big ask, that's a bear. Changes whole complexity of the application.
Thank you, Mark, for noticing that. And also if it's possible to make a, a global change of Divney Ton and Schwab L P, which is now known as DTS Provident L P and has been for a little while, so if, if that's not an issue. And then one last item, which, you know, I had brought to Sabrina's attention, but I wanted to bring to the board if the, the board is willing to, to add a statement to the resolution that it, it has no objection to the issues of a final C O for the retail component upon the signing of the site plan. The issue that we've, you know, come across is, as you know, there are supply issues still. And so, you know, in terms of how long it might take to build out these trash enclosures and as we've mentioned before, the, the current owner of the retail component is having, because they only operate in the T C O and not a C- because they only operate in the TCO and not a CO, which is affecting their financing and their property. So, we're looking, you know, we're looking to get that, that final CO as quickly as possible. So that's, you know, if there is a statement from the planning board that there is no objection to moving it forward with that, obviously the building inspector is terminated in the end, but if there's any statement to that effect that the planning board is willing to incorporate into the resolution, it might be helpful.
Well, it's been a long drawn-out process, even with, 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 I don't know. We, we normally obviously do it when, when everything's finalized, so.
I mean, that feels wholly unrelated to the garbage receptacles issue, right?
Well, no, that is, that is the only...
This is the last thing that's on to, to get, to move from a TCO to a CO.
Sure, but...
But the site functions today currently with how the trash is being removed, and since this is just an amendment to that, why would that hold up the CO, provided that all of the other conditions of the CO are met, right? So, I, I think that that seems reasonable.
Well, we could say that at the end of every resolution, right? It just, it's not, I don't, I don't see the connection.
Yeah, yeah. Have you, have you encountered any problems with, with whatever the orders yet for these, these receptacles?
Well, we, we know that the, the steel surround is probably about, you know, 12 to 16 weeks out. At least that's what we're being told now. You know, we, we are still running into anything that's like metal-type products, you know, piping and things of that, enormously long lead times. And I, you know, I just think that, you know, certainly right now, what we're waiting for, you know, is the completed works permit from the Westchester County Department of Health for the, for the final, on the sewer and water approvals, and that would be it for CO. You know, other, you know, unless you're going to tag this on to the, you know, the final CO, which doesn't seem like it would be reasonable.
So you're not going to have a final CO anyway until the, the county takes that, those, those steps?
I didn't hear that.
Pardon?
I, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
I, I was just trying to clarify from my own understanding. The CO is still going to be held up because you still need to sign off from the county on, on those aspects that are still within their jurisdiction?
Well, we've, yes, well, we've, we've had, all of the work is done, it has been inspected, and all of the documentation is being sent to the Westchester County Department of Health. We did get the last completed work sign, sign off pretty quickly, but we just can't, you know, I just don't know how long that's going to take. And perhaps, Mark, if you have anything to add to that, you can add to that. You're a little bit closer to it than I am on a daily basis.
Yeah, no, as Dave's been saying, all the work has been done, and all the work has, in general, been signed off on by the county through emails and the like. What we are trying to get from them or have, have applied for, or will be applying for, is their final completed works approval letter for all of the water-related work that went on related to the retail project. And there was one element that related to a meter pit related to the office building, totally kind of unrelated to the retail project, but as the way that the plans were drawn, kind of came into the department's approval. That work was just recently completed, within, I'd say, I think it was David, within the past six to eight weeks, yeah. So, we're in the process of documenting that now and sending that into the county to get that letter released. But all the work that's related to the dedication of the water and sewer for, that the town will be taking ownership of, that has been completed. So it's just a matter of getting that final letter out, but we couldn't get that without also applying for this work that was related to the office building, which is not going to be dedicated to the town in any way. So, you know, hoping to have, and as Dave mentioned, the county is a little unpredictable at times, and especially more recently, the health department has been experiencing heavy application loads, shortage of sta, shortage of staff, and all the usual complaints, but it seems like it's been getting harder and harder to get things out from them in a timely fashion. What should take maybe one to two weeks could easily take three to four or potentially more, so. That's where, you know, Dave is trying to be upfront and saying, you know, we, it's just out of our control, basically.
Right.
At that point.
Sabrina and Jennifer, what are your thoughts on this? Where we, obviously, we normally don't do this, so what are your thoughts in this particular case?
Well, you know, I'd want to hear from Bob as well, but I, I guess I'm not inclined to do this because we've had instances, and it's not as of recent, where, you know, things get lost in the shuffle, right? That, that, you know, there's things even in other, in other commercial areas in town where we're just realizing now, because of other applications, that certain things weren't completed. And, you know, so I would not be in favor of separating this.
I agree.
But Bob should talk.
I agree 100% with Sabrina. That's exactly what I was going to say, and she said it a little bit nicer. So I do agree with her approach and assessment.
Okay.
And, and I would really defer to Sabrina and Bob. I think this is more of a, you know, administrative matter than a legal matter. So I would defer to their judgment as far as the best processing within their department.
So the way the condition is drawn now, it hasn't changed that, so it would still go for the later date and not at the early signature? Is, is that correct?
The way the resolution is drafted would just be status quo, that, right? The trash enclosures would be completed, and then the final CO would be issued.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with it, based on recommendations from staff and the folks who are charged for this. So, it sounds unfortunate, but I, I don't think in the end it's going to matter anyway because you, you've got the county, the board of health, and hopefully you'll get your order, and this is, this is not, this is not inter construction, put in a couple of wheel stops and the bollards or those are going to be put in. So that was my fault.
It's not the, the material, it's the material lead.
Yeah, I see.
Just throwing something out there, is there any way could that work be bonded? Not so much the health department, I, I totally get that, and that we're going to push and all the rest. It's where Dave's at the mercy is, you know, of basically these delays these days throughout the entire supply chain. And a lot of times, they're being told one thing, and, you know, things are not being delivered on time.
Jennifer, can that be bonded?
That is an option, if that's something that the board wants to entertain. So the, I guess under that process, the applicant would submit a performance bond, whether that's in the form of a letter of credit, a cash bond agreement, or a surety bond to ensure the performance of those, those measures. And then once they're done, the performance bond can be released.
But that would be acceptable to the building inspector then, in terms of, because again, I mean, that's...
Without speaking to the building inspector, I don't know.
I know he's in the other, so I just don't know the other word.
So sorry, I, I think I misunderstood from the beginning, so I, I want to understand, what, what is being requested of us?
I think what we're requesting is, is a further resolution in the, you know, to add further paragraphs to state that the planning board, well, ideally what we would like is, is a statement that the, the certificate of compliance may be issued with the bond upon the, so if, if it's with the bond, then upon the completion of the work, that the certificate of occupancy for the entire retail component may be issued without the completion of this trash enclosure installation. So it's not dependent upon the completion of the installation.
Is that, just, just one follow-up question, is that within our, you know, yeah, powers, jurisdiction, can we just, is that something that we, I know we can say whatever we want, but, but, I mean, right, it's not really our determination, right?
Robert, chairman, can I say something for a second?
Yeah, please, Bob.
I mean, I would definitely have to defer to Bart Carey, who's been involved with the water. He knows everything that's still required. With all due respect to Mark and Dave, I would definitely consult with the building inspector. They know exactly the things that are outstanding, and it might be more than what we think or know at this meeting.
Yeah, I, I think it's just safer to leave it as is, and, and, you know, it's, you know, you're operating now, and this is not, it's certainly not impacting your, your operation. And if it takes four, five, six weeks to get the, the metal, my bet is that you're not going to be any, any further behind with the board of health.
Yeah, I guess the, the other way I'd put it is, what's the hardship here, you're arguing?
So the hardship is for, and I'm sorry she's not on the line, Amy Cross of Pittman, she was, she was here in the prior meeting. The issue that they're having is mainly with their, with their lender, which is, which requires a CO, that there, that there be a CO for the, for the property, and there, it hasn't been a CO. And so they're technically, you know, I don't know if they're in default, but, you know, it's been an issue with their, with their lender. So that's why we've been trying to wrap this up sooner rather than later. So from the perspective of the owner, the current owner of the property, that's what I was speaking for. So I, but I, you know, that's, that's where we're at. Obviously, we want to move forward with this resolution, and this will get the process going. I just wanted to, you know, explore whether it was possible to, to include something in the resolution. If, if not directing the building department to do something, at least stating that there's no objection to them doing that, to either, you know, if a bond's the answer, then the bond.
Yeah, but, but to Eldad's question, you know, what's the downside that's going on? You're still going to be operating under a TCO, you're still going to be either in default on your loan covenant.
For a shorter period of time.
Well, we don't know that, I mean, you're presuming it will be a shorter time with the city board of health.
Are there penalties from the bank?
I don't have that information at, at this time, you know. But, I mean, that's something I could, you could find out, but that's, that's what we've been...
Well, we can, we can, what we can do is, I suppose, is we could approve the resolution, get that going. If you find you have your board of health approval in the next two weeks or three weeks, come back in and we'll, we can consider just doing either a bond or some sort of a change. But at this point, we're just kind of guessing that this might actually help, you know, maybe not do anything whatsoever. Again, not to hold you guys up, but, you know, to Sabrina's point, some things really get, they fall in cracks very often.
That, that sounds fair. I mean, if we get it up quick and with those supply chain issues, you know, if we, you know, that, that, that sounds fair, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Just, and, and maybe this is not worth pursuing, that's entirely up to you. But I, I have a son who owns a metal fabricating company. And he turns out that he is getting a lot of work because many of them, I'm not, I'm not advertising his services here. He's in Colorado anyways. But the point I wanted to make is that they're getting a lot of work now, and because they're finding out that a lot of these bulk manufacturers are having trouble meeting their demand by getting the wrong to the steel, the components, in order to actually fabricate them. And it's turning out that, that many, at least the ones he's familiar with in his marketplace, are going to local fabricators who have access to the materials and can go ahead and, and build it, and he's finding it quite lucrative. There might be an easy way out by contacting some local guys and say, have, have you got like 50 linear feet of, you know, two-by-two steel and some aluminum, and can you go ahead and make these? And it's a chance to, I don't know if it'd be cheap or not, but you might get it quicker, you might get out of this problem soon. Just a thought.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, I mean, I think we're in agreement with your suggestion, which is that if we're finding that we are, you know, that we're having difficulty, okay, all right.
Good, okay, good. So, otherwise, we're okay with the resolution?
With those minor...
Those minor changes, yes.
Changes, yes.
Okay. Anyone else having questions or issues or problems on the resolution?
I do. I keep on trying to get rid of this page three, condition five, page three. I still don't understand why we are imposing this condition on this applicant. I don't get it. It, it's, we are going to, first of all, it just doesn't, I don't think there's any reason for this to be in here because at what point in time in the future is somebody going to do a count and say, oh, we're four cars? We have four cars that we can't, that we cannot park on this property on this particular day. And on that day, and on that day, it's a four-car problem. It's, it's just, there's no way, you're never going to be able to do the metric on this. It's going to be a much bigger problem that somebody brings to the town, rather than four cars. So, and that is going to require a much bigger solution than the, the, the fact of these trash compactor, not trash compactors, trash facilities being put in place. So I don't think it has any real effect, actually, any rational effect. And it seems to me that we're doing this just because we can do it. I don't see the purpose of this, and I think it may be such a bad precedent for us to come in and to just put this rule in place just because we can put it in place when there's no rational basis for it. 600 parking spaces, if you do the math on four space, you lose four spaces off of 600 parking spaces. Parking ratio goes from five down to 4.97. It's, it's, it's absurd to me, it's absurd that it should be in here. I have trouble voting for this application, to approve this application, because it seems to me it's an overreach by the town. And I would like to see it stricken.
Okay. Sabrina, don't we already have, because we have so much of the parking space already in, in green space, right? And, and, and reserve, aren't there provisions already in our approvals that state on a, on a more global basis that if there are problems with parking, that, you know, that space can be used? I, I forget the language, and I, and I don't recall how that is actually triggered between the town and the applicant, or the owner at that point. But I think we have some of that, don't we, already? Because we have that, that, all those spaces that are preserved for future potential use if necessary.
So, so you do have, you do have the land banking. I can tell you that it is not as detailed, there's a whole parking management plan, which is based off of the numbers that were approved at that time. And there's no real process that is spelled out to understand when that land banking becomes activated.
And I will add that that land banking parking only relates to the office component and not to the retail parcel.
Correct.
Well, I, I, I think that we had this conversation, and, and I, I'm, I'm with you, Tom. I mean, frankly, I, I think I was supportive then of not having this, I'll have to check the minutes. But I think I was supportive then of not... Yes, you were. Okay, I'm imposing this requirement, and, and I remain supportive, I'm, I'm comfortable striking that. I don't know why it keeps appearing.
I can tell you it was unclear from the minutes and the discussion whether or not you wanted it stricken, or it was just, if it was just Tom, or, you know, you guys all have to vote on it.
Fair enough. I'm here to say affirmatively that I'm comfortable and I'm supportive of it being stricken.
Okay. Dick, Canaan, your thoughts?
I have a quick question. What is the, what are we, I mean, what is the hardship if we are getting a count? It's a count, right? Or am I misunderstanding this?
Well, I think we have a count, we know what we have.
I mean, Tom's point is the reverse, it's not just what is the hardship, but what, what, what is the justification? Right, of, of, of imposing this requirement?
I think, if I heard correctly, the justification was to know overall what our parking count is. Did I understand that right? Like, just keeping a count across all our different...
Well, our, our parking count currently exceeds the existing code for retail, and even with the elimination of these four spaces, we still meet or exceed the existing code. So, you know, we're happy to do, you know, we're happy with the language how it's written. If you folks would like to stricken that, then, you know, strike that, that's fine, you know, you, you go ahead. We're okay with how it's written right now, and, and, because we, we truly believe that it won't be a problem moving forward. There's, hasn't been any parking issues out there, other than high school parkers in our parking lot. But other than that, you know, I think we have plenty of parking, but, you know, however you want to proceed with that one item.
And we just, and, and, and staff just need a vote by more than one or two people. And we just, and, 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 and staff just need a vote by more than one or two people.
Yep. Dick, what, what's your thought, uh, thinking on it?
Sorry, are, are you saying something to me?
Uh, I was actually asking Dick if he had some thoughts on it.
Oh.
I think something happened to his computers.
Dick?
Do you hear us?
Is he frozen?
No, he's moving slightly.
Dick?
Dick? Yeah, you're muted.
He's muted, yeah.
Okay, what, do you have a thought on, on, uh, striking or leaving that, that section in?
Let's move forward.
So I don't know.
I'm fine with this. I'm fine with striking it.
Okay.
So it's, it's three out of five, I guess.
A minimum of three.
Minimum of three. This is all we need.
Stricken.
Done, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, still getting close. We're gonna have to bond that too. Are we good? On our approval. Uh, I think we're all set. So with those adjustments and those amendments, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any moves? Good, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Have a good night.
Yep.
Night.
Thank you all.
So we've done everything else, all the back, gone through our, um, discussion, opportunities for public property and chap law hamlet.
Yes.
So, um, have at it. So, uh, I, I, I put together some thoughts, trying to hit, um, some themes. Uh, cause I think this, uh, this issue of vision is important, but equally important, or perhaps even more important, is, uh, trying to help the town board and suggesting, uh, some, some process. And, and, and scoping, if you will, through, um, you know, um, surveys. So, um, uh, I don't know how you want to tackle this. You probably don't want to make it an all night affair, but, uh, you know, some thoughts on, uh, where we are on this. Canaan, you're good, you're still there. Canaan, by the way, thank you for showing up. You look, you look like you're really suffering. So sorry for you, but also very glad that you're there.
Oh, that's okay. I just, um, it's going to be a suffering for, for a cou- couple of weeks. So I'm just trying to figure out how I'm gonna navigate it. So, um, I'm happy to be here.
Yep. Eldad, any thoughts? Why, you start off.
Yeah.
Tom and I have already bloviated, so you, you go.
Well, I mean, I really appreciate you putting this together. Um, it's, it's helpful and, um, I think. You know, having prompts, I think, uh, advances a discussion and, um, that, that's helpful. Um, I do think that. I guess my question is, what are we trying, what is our, uh, sort of ultimate output work product that we'd like to advance? And is it sort of a, a memo to the town board? Is, is that what we're trying to do? Um, and, or is it a document that looks like this? That's, that's, that, that just asks a lot of questions, that gets them, sort of gives them the prompts that, that they might sort of need as a, a, a little bit of a, a push to, to continue that discussion? What, what are we trying to do?
That's a very good question. I think, from my perspective, uh, I think more of a prompting. And that's why I sent everything to the town board members and then staff and everyone. Uh, not that we're trying to take from the process, but we're trying to prompt them and, and to get some thoughts there. I guess ultimately, um, the, you know, based on their schedule and comfort, et cetera, is, is to, um, you know, uh, be serious in, in our attempt to work with them and help them. Um, move this thing along. Um, and, uh, at least that's, that's where my thoughts are. So it is, I don't know if it's necessarily to write a memo unless for some reason we are invited to write a memo. I don't think that's appropriate for us, but I really think it's appropriate to send things up to the town board. Ruminating thoughts, strategies, themes, uh, you know, the things that just occurred to us. And, um, and, and perhaps I think they're doing the same. I know the last week we had a joint meeting, I thought they said that they were going to be doing the same sort of thing in terms of everyone take back from the meeting. What do we think are not the problems, but what are the issues? What are we trying to solve for? What are we trying to enhance? How do we do it? And, um, you know, getting those kind of like global issues out there so that everyone has some sort of feel on this. So that was my thinking on it. And I thought that, uh, Tom really advanced a lot of the thinking with the survey questions.
Yep.
And, uh, and the, uh, process. Now they can look at that, we can all look at it and say, we can do this, we can change this, it might be different here. But I thought it was very, very useful to get that out. I was just trying to lay sort of the thematic thing in a situation in terms of how we, how we carve out a vision.
So, so, um, I also think that the survey questions were really great. And I think, um, I think that can be incredibly helpful to advance that as part of the discussion. Uh, I'm already curious to see the results. Uh, now obviously surveys are a science, right? And how, you know, how the questions are posed or is this really important? And how you, you know, who is your sample and sample size and, and all that is, is very relevant. So that, that's, that's not my world, but someone's got to figure that out.
It is someone's world.
It is someone's world, but, uh, but I thought that the survey, uh, was really interesting. Um, so, uh, that, that's, thank you, and that's great. Um, a couple of thoughts. Um, one is, um, I return to the, I, something that I'm, I'm sure I said the last time we had this conversation. One is that I, I think it is important to have a point of view, right? And the town board should have a point of view, um, and, and, and a, a, a North Star or a goal or, or, or something. Now, now you, um, in your first point here, you articulate a goal. And you write the goal ought to be the enhancement of the downtown experience as opposed to an overhaul of the, of the downtown hamlet. That is a point of view.
Absolutely.
Um, I think it's, it. I don't disagree with it, but it wouldn't, that wouldn't be how I would write it, but that's fine. You wrote it. Uh, and maybe we should sort of give the town board a few.
Absolutely.
Potential, you know, mission statements or, or, or goals or whatever that may be, or, or if you give the prompts towards a point of view. Um, getting to the question that I asked, I think two meetings ago, and I, I think it set us off in a little bit of a, 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 the wrong direction. When I said, you know, what is the, the problem we're trying to solve? Where problem is in and of itself problematic. And so I, I wasn't suggesting that there are problems. There are problems, but it's not to say that there aren't good things also, right? There are challenges, there are opportunities. What is it that we're trying to do? Why are we trying to do something? Are we just doing it for the sake of, uh, of doing it? What are the questions that Bob, or what are the options? And a couple of the questions that, that, that Tom posed was sort of none, right? Like, maybe we should do nothing, right? I mean, nothing is, is an option. In every environmental review, there's a no action, right? And so, you know, no action is, is, is a choice here. Um, but the, so, so, uh, you know, I, I just want to make sure that, or my inclination is, is above all else. There is a point of view and then the questions are asked, how do we achieve that? And perhaps what we can be helpful with is, everything that, everything that you produce is, is helpful, I think, already is very helpful. But perhaps adding additional.
Yep.
Potential ways of thinking about this. And then the town board can absorb it and say, yeah, I'm actually not interested in this. This doesn't interest me, this does interest me, unless advance this a little bit further. That's how I, uh.
I, I think that's actually, uh, that, that's exactly what I was hoping that we would, we would, uh, we would develop. Those other additional, uh, points of view, North Stars, as you said, I, I think that's terrific. Because this is just one person. We're only five people. And then there are another five people and you have staff and everyone else. So the more that we get in that equation, I think it's fantastic. So I think that's, I think that is, uh, hopefully the town board is, is doing the same.
Right.
Definitely not what we prompted them to.
Right, I mean, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, uh, we have to be honest, that there, there is no neutral position, right? Even doing nothing i- is a choice, right? We're, we're, we're advancing what we have, you know, without changes. And so, um, uh, and that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I just think that, um.
I think that's recognized, but I think it's useful to actually articulate those other points of view.
Yes.
That's what I think would be useful.
Go ahead.
More useful. I, I think it's great. I, I, I appreciate it. I think that's great.
So, um, first of all, I, I think that it's important to remember that. And in a memo, not a memo, et cetera, et cetera. We're not, we're not doing this on, on referral, right? So there's no official response that we're being asked to give.
Right.
So I agree with you that it's sort of wide open, right? We, we really do whatever we think will be useful to them. And whatever form it takes is really not important. It's to get the ideas out there. And I think that I agree with all of that. I think that that's, that that's right. I don't think we're starting from scratch though. I don't think the town is starting from scratch because there is, as much as some people champion it and other people don't, there is a comprehensive plan. And it does have goals and it has, I don't know if it has objectives. I know it has very few actions, but, um, but it's out there. And if you, I think if you take that document and you take what I think we all heard through the form-based code discussion. That there are, that the kernel of what people want, you know, can be found there. And so I think that if I was to advise the town board how they ought to proceed, I would say, go back to the comprehensive plan. Start there because that is a, that's a, that's a legislated, agreed-to document. Which I think very few people really have a problem with in terms of its intent and its content. Maybe, maybe didn't go far enough, et cetera, et cetera, but I think that that's a good place for them to start. And in that, you can think they, they can find the objective statement for this particular initiative. Find a way to draw from that in order to do that. And that's what I would suggest. We could, we could draft, we could draft up, you know, bullet points of what we think that objective statement ought to be. And we could have separate versions of that if we want, which is fine. But from my point of view, it's really pretty much already there. I think it just needs to be looked at and affirmed as the overall set of objectives. And so that's what I would do, but, um, I mean, others, Canaan, I'm sure you have some thoughts on this as well.
Yes, yes. If you don't mind, I'm gonna pipe in now because I will fade out pretty quickly. So, uh, this is, you know, this is great. I, I agree that, you know, it is nice to give, uh, some talking points, some direction. Uh, and also, I also agree with Eldad that it is definitely not a all-inclusive direction, right? And we cannot get there just as the team that we are here, right? So, um, I think we're all, all in, we all agree there. The couple of things that I feel that we should, and, and the thing I should, we should consider beyond the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, is that. The world has changed quite a bit since the comprehensive one was done, right? So we have, um, different work patterns, different, uh, driving patterns, different parking patterns. And I'm not certain that all the answers we have there, uh, agree with that. The second is, um, I feel like there is some level of cognition that we should help the town board try to discern from the public is, um. What, you know, there is no action, that is an option, you're right. But inevitably, that is really not the option, right? Um, you are surrounded by towns that are building and building fast. And the understanding of what is going on around needs to be understood by our residents. Um, and I wonder if there's a way to address that. I also think, uh, being the housing sort of person here. You know, you've, you've talked about all the big, big issues and that's great. And I, I wonder if, if we think about, um, some of the sensitive issues, right? Whether it is the density equal to more kids in the classroom equal to not having, you know, enough, you know, the, the, the sort of issues that. Were not necessarily discussed openly, but were very much part of that conversation. Is it our job to, in some way, to help highlight that? Not, not our job, but in general, is it, is there a way in which we can bring those conversations to the fore, right? Like, what is the new landscape? The, the comp plan was done then, and this is what we said we wanted in the comp plan. And, you know, since then, these are the sort of change factors that have happened. And again, it's just bringing attention to it, not really guiding into a particular direction, but just bringing attention to the fact that. Things have drastically changed. And, and then, you know, do we really need to maybe address a front, open and center what the real issues were around, uh, densifying? Because, I mean, if you remember, the endless conversations we had were, this is really about densification. Are we for densification or not? And, you know, there was a lot of other things that were implied by the densification. So should we be addressing that in some of these survey questions, in some of these conversations? Um, and also the understa- giving the understanding to the layperson that it's not go, you know, it's, it's, it's not going to. There is no situation where it's a no change. So here's an opportunity, and that's how I saw it. Here's an opportunity for us to actively think as a, as a, as a town of what we want to do with our public plans. And, um, there were some options listed out in the comp plan, but there is many other things we need to consider as a group. And is it all sort of inclusive here? So my only worry would be in how do we get this to be more inclusive, more time-appropriate? And, um, ju- just, you know, getting enough opinions like Eldad said is like, uh, how are we running these surveys? Who's answering these surveys? What are the questions we're asking? How open are these questions? In terms of, you know, um, like housing types and, uh, you know, understanding what a certain housing type is. Just educating people on what that is as well. Same thing with commercial uses, parking, et cetera, et cetera. So that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Dick, you have, uh, your two cents, five cents, ten cents?
Well, I, I, I agree with Canaan. And I think that, that, uh, there's a way to try and do it, but we don't know what the outcome will be, of course. But if you were to try to enhance an area, you might want to bring in more jobs. And those would have to be like high-tech, whether it's, uh, little ions floating around or whether it's, uh, you know, medical or whatever. If we could get the land, uh, which would probably be the part of the parking lot, to get to the point where a tech operation could occur. That would bring in workers, it would bring in ancillary things like that. Uh, it, uh, it doesn't have to be anything super bad or good. We need upgraded shopping. Um, we have a lot of good stores. And, you know, one thing that's kind of missing on a, on a, kind of a minor scale, is that we don't have a really good, uh, toy store for young children, youngsters. Before they even go to school, that start to educate them in, in math and reading and, and, uh, that kind of stuff. Uh, and in New Canaan, we buy all of our gifts for our grandson. Uh, because the, the stuff that they sell is just really mind-boggling in that how well it works for the children. So that's a little store. So we need some or other things like that, that, that would be attractive. We need to advertise. We'd have to have an advertisement program to try and get people not only from the, the, uh, um, hamlet or the town, but the neighboring towns. I mean, look at, uh, Jacob Burns. That's a really interesting place for entertainment. One of the problems is it, it gets crowds and you have to worry about diseases. But, uh, but still, they, they have just rare or special things that, that happen. I think that there might be a, a, a place for post-head school education. Uh, would be another thing that could happen where. Would be another thing that could happen where people that have high SATs, maybe they don't have, they have some other issues, but they could be trained and brought to college a year later, you know, for other things. Now, that would be leaving town. We could, what about a small sports, not small, but a lower-class post-high school graduation? You know, athletic things like baseball or soccer, you know, where these kids that are interested in that, they have other teams of the same level, they're paid something, but not a tremendous amount, and the stars then rise to, you know, the bigger options. Other than that, I don't have anything to say. But I think it's, how do we advertise what we're trying to do with examples of what's really working well? I mean, it's, when my wife said today that driving through the hamlet is really so much pleasant than several years ago because it just looks nice with all the flowers, letting the kids paint on the, you know, the window glass for Halloween and things like that. She thought that was really sensational. And so that would be one building block, that it looks great downtown. And we have opportunities. We can make, we have that one space on North Greeley. You know, someday soon, hopefully, there'll be something that comes of that. So then you need housing, you know, when you have some of this. And so that's where the housing could be expanded. That's as far as I got. Other than on 63, attractive energy. What's attractive energy? I don't understand that yet. Is that, you know, certainly it shouldn't be windmills.
No, no. I think it was in terms of activity, energy in the hamlet itself. So it was not, it was not electronic, it was not, windmills, it was not other alternative sources, fossil fuel, it was not fracking, by the way.
I didn't get behind windmills.
So anyway, that was not it. I mean, again, you know, that's a great menu of the things that the challenge is, but I think the issue that we're dealing with here is the public property. And what do you do with public property? What is the appropriate use of public property? My one perspective or point of view, to echo what Eldad was saying before, everything, when you say something like this, it necessarily reflects a point of view. To my way of thinking, public property needs to be dealt with very, very carefully, and it needs to be done in a manner that maximizes return and use by town residents. So when people tell me, well, we want to build a store, we want to build, you know, whatever it is, what they want to do, it doesn't matter. It's got to be, in my way of thinking, my point of view, my north star, is that it needs to be something that needs to be broadly based to attract as many people as possible from the town to come, and that will attract energy into the hamlet. And other things will flow from that. So it's the public property issue that I think we're really looking at, and how do we deal with that? Those things that you mentioned, Dick, are absolutely essential, and that's what we all need, but it's an important menu. Are those the things that we tell someone that we're going to designate? From my standpoint, we're going to designate public property so that a toy store could be built? I probably would not support that. You know, I don't think it would be an appropriate use of public property. Private, absolutely. And hopefully, private would flow from the energy that we see from some sort of attractive public use, whatever that is. We talked about this so many times, you know, the there that's there, that will bring people into the town. And I'm talking townwide, too, and I'm not talking about just the hamlet. I think it's very important. This is a town in Newcastle. This area down here is a town area that is already attracting people with the library, the churches, the ball fields, the parking lot. My perspective is, I would love to see the parking lot, it's not going to go away, but it could be used and leveraged so that people just don't come in here and, as fast as they can, and get out of here as fast as they can once the train's here. And maybe, jeez, you actually have a place where when you get off the train, you meet with your family and you do whatever.
So I, we could, and we have, and we have for like a very long time now, starting with the comprehensive plan effort, people have been talking about, you know, what we could do, right? For the town-owned land, what we could do and the various versions of it. And the planning board could spend our time coming up with our 10 different versions of it and send that along, and I don't think it's going to be any different than anything they've heard before. And in the end, I don't think that's leadership. To me, it's, to me, where the leadership is helping them figure out, to them to figure out how to come up with that list, not what's on that list, but how to get to that list. And so I think it's a process matter for us. What they're going to have to, if they're going to, what do I know? I don't know much about town government and how it works, but if something big is going to happen there, and I happen to agree with Bob, I don't think that this should be land that's turned over for commercial development. I just don't think so. It's just too precious to do that. And there's no need for that. There's no, in my opinion, there's no existential need to have, you know, more stores. It's just, to me, it's not that important. I think that what they are going to have to, I think, if they're going to do anything of substance, they're going to have to go back to the town and ask permission to spend their town money to do it. And it's either going to be, they get permission through an election process, or they get permission through a referendum process in order to issue a bond, to spend money to do it. And that is where the rubber meets the road. And people can sit around and say, well, I think the town needs this and the town needs that, and try and take leadership to tell them what they need. Or we can have them tell us, and that's what the whole survey process is all about. In a way, the town is going to be acting the same way that a developer acts. The developer goes out and finds property, he figures out we added utility development program, he can take to that, put on that property, he figures out what the cost is going to be, he figures out what the return investment is going to be, and he takes that as a package. He takes that as a package to his lending stack, to his financiers, and says, you know, I can make you money. And that's his moment where it either lives or dies by making that pitch. The town is going through the same process. They have land, but they haven't freed it up yet. They're trying to figure out what the utility would be that they would add, that then they take to their financiers, which are the taxpayers. And they're going to have to make that case for them. And I think that it's the investors, the people who are looking for return on their investments of having their families live here, right? Paying their mortgages every month, paying their taxes every month. They're the ones who are doubling down over and over and over again. And if you come to that moment and say, okay, we've, this is what we think ought to happen here, will you pay for it? You better be pretty sure you're going to get a yes answer. And if, you know, if the answer is nothing, then the answer is nothing. But for us or anybody or any single group to sit around and make prognostications about what ought to happen here, to me, is missing the point and is deflecting the real effort that has to happen here, which is to get the answers from the town, from the people, instead of from, you know, people sitting around conference room tables. I mean, they're all great ideas, but they're not, they're our ideas and not the town's ideas, not the people's ideas. So I think the real leadership here is in process and how to get through it.
So Tom, I agree with every word you're saying. There's two things I'm wondering how we can do better at, right? When we define the process, we're putting down a couple of things there that are not potentially all-inclusive of the options that we can present to, like I just pointed out. So one is, how do we get to that, right? And like, how do we, how do we make sure that we are trying to, for example, let's take the survey. Every question you ask on the survey is already determining a certain boundary that we have drawn. So my question is, how do we make sure that there's enough questions in there to make it inclusive of all the possibilities or of most possibilities, right? Like, that is my question. And then the second really is, I agree with you that we shouldn't, we shouldn't at all, I mean, I also agree that at the end of the day, there are some trade-offs that we will have to do for it to be, you know, town-owned land to be developed and for something to happen there, even if like the town is the master planner, the master builder, right? The question is, how do we inform the public of what those trade-offs are? And in what format is that sort of distributed? So I completely agree with you that we should not define outcomes at all. But the question is, by just, you know, by just the act of putting together a survey or putting together a bunch of questions, we are defining the overall picture. The question is, what iterations do we need to do as a group and others need to participate to make this the most sort of rich set of questions? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, actually, because I think it goes back to what Eldad said before. Everything that we've asked and put down by piece of paper is reflective of a, necessarily, a point of view.
Yes.
Now, whether that's broad enough or not, that's for us to talk about. So I think that's very interesting, and I think it's, process is critically important, but process without that framework of points of view, I don't think will get us there. So I think it's a joint exercise. Process is critically important because, as you said before, the way you ask the questions, we talked about this last time, just the way we ask questions. But, you know, we have to get to a point of view, it seems to me, and there are different ones out there, and they need to be flushed out, cultivated, examined, and then you start your process from there. And again, I'm not proposing that it should be, we want a, here's what you're going to vote on, townspeople, it's going to be a community center, it's going to be a 25-yard pool, it's going to be two basketball courts and an auditorium, yea or nay? No, I don't think it should be anything like that whatsoever. But I thought Eldad raised a great question, a great point when he said, necessarily, when you put something down, it's reflective of a point of view, and I think the questions can do that as well. It's never going to be perfect, and I don't think we should beat ourselves up over it. But I'm very interested in hearing what Eldad's point of view might be, for example, his perspective, where he's coming from in terms of asking how to enhance. Not that he necessarily is saying this is the way to do the enhancement, but make sure this is incorporated in the question about enhancing.
But you can't, you can't, you can't answer the question, how to enhance, without implying what it is you're going to do. I mean, you can't, those things are implied in the answer, they're implied in the question that's asking, what would you do? And that's, you know, that's fine, and that's the conversation that the whole town is going to be having, right? Against a set of objectives, right? Which is where the town board needs to start, right? The original statement, this is why we are doing this. And then you start to fill in the blanks from there. And, you know, I agree with that. And we can all, you know, have our opinions about that.
But do they have their why?
Not yet. Well, maybe they do, but they haven't articulated it in a specific way. And that's their next task, I think, they agree, they need to sit down and do that. That's what they said in our last meeting, anyway.
So, I mean, maybe we're viewing our roles a little bit differently.
Well, we can say, we can tell them what we think.
Right. And I think that helping them or gives, you know, certain suggestions is pushing them in a direction, prompting them for what might be a why.
Sure.
And then that's the, so there's sort of three components. There's the goal, there's the process, I'm getting to the goal, and then there's the details that fill in sort of the, you know, within the process. And I agree with you that helping them with processes is critical, but I do think that we're within our rights and I think can be helpful by suggesting potential goals, points of view, north stars, I think can be helpful. Because before I said, right, you know, not doing something is a choice, doing everything is not a choice, right? I mean, as much as we like to think that we can satisfy everyone, obviously, we're never going to. And I think, Tom, you yourself said on previous occasions, well, so first of all, I think you're right that we cannot ignore the comprehensive plan, and we cannot ignore the Form Based Code process that we all went through because that was relevant and interesting and asked a lot of these questions, and a lot came up, and there was a lot to learn from it. And so we cannot ignore those things. However, you yourself, Tom, said that the comprehensive plan is the answer to any question that's posed, right? You can take anything you want out of it and say, see, I was right, right? You know, it is sort of Pollyannaish, and maybe that's what a lot of, you know, master plans, comprehensive plans do or try to do or end up doing, whether they try to do it or not. So that's why I think.
I have another comment.
Go ahead, yes.
One of the things that we have that many towns in Westchester County don't have is we have a railroad station and a railroad tracks, and we have land right next to it. And the other things that are happening is that, you know, people that have businesses are pulling back from two foreign countries, China and California. So, you know, those, there are people looking to go other places.
That wasn't a political statement.
Where there's highly educated people. And so if we have the education right, and we have post-education, that could meld with some sort of tech opportunity on the land that the town owns. And people could, they could live in New York City if they want, then come up here and go to work, and then go back home again, do the reverse from what used to be. So, but, and the airport's only 20 minutes away. And so that's, we have a transportation plus here, and that might be one of the factors that we want to build around or see if people can build around.
So I think I agree with everybody, what everybody's saying. I, when I, first of all, I just, these survey questions, I mean, just throw them away. I mean, I just did it to get this conversation going. And I'm not, I'm definitely not an expert, and the experts are out there, and I expect that the town board will engage one in order to do it. I just tried to put together what I think were the key defining questions that got at the, what we learned out of the Form Based Code process, I think, and what is embedded, I think, in the comprehensive plan. And that was to talk about, do you sell, just a threshold question. We can say, well, gee, we want more shops, and, you know, we want housing, we want this, that, and the other thing. The fundamental question is, do you sell land, town-owned land, for commercial uses? And then you can list what they are and let people decide, well, yeah, we could do that. Do you sell land for residential uses? Put in there every equity piece of the pie you want to, including market-grade housing. And then as other options, retain the land for these purposes, right? For the environmental benefits of, you know, Persia Brook and expanding on its environment. Retain it for parking, retain it for improvements to public health and public use. Those, I think, are the fundamental categories for decision-making under which you can describe what each of those actually means in terms of putting together a vision for what you want to see downtown. And that was the intent of this. And then, well, this is what it's going to cost you, right? Which is the part B.
Yeah, which is the trade-offs, right? That's what you mean. Like, I think what you're saying is, yeah, no, I completely agree. It's like, here are the different options. That made a lot of sense to me. Like, there's town-owned land, you can do A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Like, we can go down the lot, you know, put down a laundry list, have even more nuanced questions there. And then the other is, if you don't And then the other is, if you don't sell that land, here are the options, A, B, C, D, E, and, you know, percentages of whatever, whatever it is that can give us a fine, uh, compass on what the town is thinking. But the other thing I feel is that it's important, and, and maybe I'm wrong, this is a question, of sort of explaining what the trade-offs are, right? There is cer- a certain level of understanding here in this room with the town board, with, you know, that is not necessarily understood widely, right? Like, what are the trade-offs if you want A, B, C, D, E? Like, do we get into some of that? Um, and then also, again, highlighting the sort of the vision and the changes that have happened since. Like, I, I really think that, that there has to be a way to sort of address that, uh, and get an opinion on it.
Well, I don't, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I'm a little bit perplexed about how you put together a vision. I mean, what is, what, what do we mean by vision? Are we talking about a program of uses?
No.
What does that mean?
I think what you're saying here, uh, as far as the different uses you can have, is it town-owned land versus are you going to allow commercial use? Meaning, are you gonna sell land and allow a commercial developer to develop it? I think that's what you're asking. And then you're saying, here are the different sort of options if you sell it and, and allow someone to develop it, and here are the options that are not. As far as the vision is concerned, I mean, I think, uh, there are a lot of questions in the overlying, the front, you know, that, where you sort of allude to, um, questions which are relating to the comp plan and sort of going, going back to understanding what is it that they want out of being there or, you know, so that's what I mean by vision.
Yeah.
Right? Isn't that?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess those are the objectives, you know, this is what we want. Basically, you know, these are the values that we're bringing to this problem.
Sure.
Not problem, to this opportunity.
Correct. Yeah, and I, and I think that's great. I, I just think that in there, it would help to sort of highlight as being leaders and understanding what the trade-offs can be. Sort of talking about what those trade-offs can be or informing folks about what those trade-offs can be, either through questions or through informing them that, well, you can have X, but then there is this. I mean, this is a question. Is there, is there a way to sort of lead to that understanding?
I, I, I think you underestimate the, the intelligence of this community. I think it'd be pretty well-known what the, what the impacts are. You, you, you start talking about the, for example, parking, what, what's gonna happen there. I, I think they'll get it. I mean, I, I don't know if that's necessary. I mean, obviously, at some point, you're gonna have quite a constraints.
Yeah.
But getting back to what Tom said, and then, I'm sorry, interrupted, but just, again, I, I just wanna, uh, admit that I've been, uh, Eldad is correct. I've been found out here from my point of view and perspective, clearly, you know, probably in the wrong room, if people really are seriously considering selling the, the town property for commercial use or residential use. I think that would be just a horrible u- use of, of the property. It is transitory, it is a one-time thing, you get a burst of money and that's it. I would, you know, uh, again, I'm in the wrong room if that's what people wanna do. I'm wasting my time, because my perspective, my North Star is it's public property, it should remain public property and used to the best possible way for public use. So, I mean, Tom's got that in the survey, and I understood why he did that, because it is something that, by the way, I assume it's, it's, it's over and done with, but I, you know, that's improper. People really might have that perspective, and the town board may have that perspective, God forbid, that, uh, they, they wanna sell it, and, uh, so we have the toy stores.
Yeah, in the end, it's gonna be their list, not our list. We'll let them check it out.
I agree.
Right.
That's definitely something.
So, and again, to, to your point, Conan, every single time you ask something, you are actually reflecting a point of view, and, and that clearly my thoughts were reflecting a point of view, where I'm talking about public use.
Oh, I'm all, I'm, I'm all in with that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand. Dick, I, I cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, so am I. I, I agree with that. I completely agree with that. And you're right that we do indicate that it is, um, you know, that it's a point of view that we are discussing. So the, uh, that, there is a point of view that we are sort of putting out there when we ask questions or when we lay, lay this out. So my question is, are there things that we need to include, uh, as part of it? And like you said.
Firstly, I think that you have to go through a series of, frankly, a series of surveys and narrow it down, because if people come back and they say, this is, this, these five things sound great, then you sit there and say, well, by the way, this is what it costs for a parking. To just be understanding, is that possible? Dick, I'm sorry, you're, you've been cut off.
Okay, um, I, I'm thinking that maybe the base has to be, to in part be identified as, what a- what assets do we have? We have a train station, um, we have an airport that's very close. If it takes twenty minutes to get to the airport, uh, if you live twenty miles, we'd be, you could go, you know, pretty fast. But in New York City, if it's twenty miles away, you don't go for a day or two. But that's, so you have, you have an airport, you have trains, and you have a growing medical, uh, part of our town. And so that hooks in with the hospitals and everything, and so this is, there's, we have assets. Like the land, you know, the parking area. So we have land, we have transportation, we have long-term transportation dis- distance-wise, and we have medical stuff. The other stuff can be brought in as time goes in, but we need, what is the base that we have that, that can make some other things work? And ours is fairly good.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but that is kind of obvious too, right? I mean, if we're talking about intelligence of the town, understanding what we're able to do, um, I think it is pretty obvious what our assets are. Um, it's really the limitations that I think are a little more critical, if, if there are any.
If, if we're talking about, um, I think the economic, uh, benefits that might come out of, uh, out of this initiative, I guess I would make the, the argument that if I was on the town board, I would say, we need to declare that we are going to use this town-owned land for public use. We're gonna retain the ownership of it, we're gonna come up with a, a series of programs that enrich, right, the downtown. And that is not only gonna be to the benefit of people's quality of life, that's gonna add to the, the value of the properties. That's gonna add to the value of the, it's, it's gonna add to the value of the, of the, uh, commercial retail land that we already have. That's gonna add to the overall value of the town and make it, make, be an economic benefit to it.
I think you're searching for the term attractive energy.
Yes. Was that what that means?
Yeah.
Uh, so, but I'm not on town board, right? But, and so I don't think that, I mean, if the, if the town board can make that as part of their, that's their objective, that could be their objective statement, but I don't think the town board can then say, well, don't talk and, and do a survey and say, don't tell us that, you know, we are not going to, it doesn't matter what you say, we're not gonna put stores down there. You have to take leadership and say, well, this is what we think ought to happen, but then you actually have to ask the questions, by Zek.
I, I, and one thing I would add to that is when you talked about process, right? I like the idea of like a series of surveys, which is like, there is the sort of so- settling the big picture questions first, and then sort of add, layering in those additional questions and restraints as part of the, you know, as part of the process. Um, whether it's surveys or whether it's questions or whether it's, you know, that would be a good way to sort of make those big calls and then sort of go deeper and deeper into like, all right, we talked about public use of, uh, you know, we are talking about community land, uh, community uses for public land. So here's, you know, here are the options, and here, and then we sort of go deeper into that. So, um, maybe that's, that's a good, good way to think about it, but I definitely see surveys as being a part of it. It, it, maybe there's multiple.
Yeah, I don't know how many, uh, iterative steps in this process you can take before you end up, you know, uh, just, you know, burning out. I mean, I think if the survey, if there is a survey, if it's done properly, you can elicit the, um, the top ten things that people wanna see.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you work from there to put together what is rational from a leadership point of view, right? And what the, uh, the best answer is what the sum, the summation of all those things are. And then put that out there as a, uh, in a, I guess, series of public meetings where you come up then with a physical vision, right? A concept plan of some kind saying, this is, these are, the, these are the things you wanted, you told us you wanted, and this is how we can make it fit on the land, and this is what it can be. And then I don't know whether you do a charrette to get there. I don't think so. I've designed charrettes, I think, or designed charrettes, I think are a mistake. Um, but you could definitely go through a series of public engagement meetings where you elicit responses, and then if you need to, you know, if you need to, uh, amend or change that vision, then you could do an iterative loop, right, to be sure you have it right. But the surveys, I think, are, I would be careful about going around and around on that one.
Right.
Again, the experts will know.
If the first ten capture everything, the first ten questions capture it, there is no reason.
Yep.
To do multiple, but it's.
Well, to move this along a little bit, so we, you know, we're not here all night. Um, what would be helpful, I think, is now that we have some, some documents here, if, if folks would take some time, um, I would be really interested, for example, in hearing, you know, um, other perspectives on, on, and the way, framing questions and, and observations in a way that is reflective of a different perspective, a different North Star, and again, echoing Eldad's comment, um, in how we frame the, the, the questions about vision. I think that's really critical, that, you know, this is just one person doing it here. So, I mean, I think it would be really, really helpful to get more of that, and I think if we can elevate that and get, get that over to the town board again. I haven't heard anything from the town board on this, of course, it just went out, you know, yesterday, a few days ago. You know, I haven't slapped by it yet, which is.
So I'm happy to, uh, put some thoughts out there.
I think it would be terrific.
Should, should we, um?
I would love to do that too. Yeah, I'm happy to do that too, yeah.
Should we, um, just put a, a time limit on it and then just try to get, uh, circ- circulate something within?
Yeah, so we have it ready for, uh, our November one meeting. Let's keep the, uh, momentum going.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, you know, I'll see what's going on with the town board, see how they, what they thought about it.
November one is two weeks from tonight?
Yes. Again, it doesn't have to be, you know, don't, it does have to be a formal, uh, you know, memo or, you know, whatever.
Do we meet that day? Oh, it's not Election Day. Election Day is the next week, right? Yeah.
Yeah, we meet on the November first, right?
November first.
And then we meet again on the fifteenth.
Okay, so then can we say just do, um, uh, a deadline of, of the end of next week, so there's a couple of days to look at it, is that?
Sure, fair enough.
Is that okay, Conan?
Yes, yes.
On the twenty eighth.
Uh, I'm not here November first. I am going to be in California, but.
So, and again, you know, yeah, if you can for that weekend, you know, so it gets, if, if it gets the package, terrific. If you can get it to Felicia, if not, you know, email it. I mean, I didn't make the, I didn't make the cut off.
Yeah, Felicia's, it would be best to have it by Friday morning before noon.
So, um, uh, Sabrina, what's the agenda look like for that day? Are we jammed? What's going on? Do you have any, any heads up on that?
We do. Felicia has it with her.
Yeah, so we have two new, um, applications, and we have the continued public hearing. Oh, no, we put that to the fifteenth.
You did that on the fifteenth.
We put that to the fifteenth, so it's just.
Two new applications.
Two new applications.
Good. And we might have, you know, a set of minutes and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Right, and, and you've been, I've been timekeeping these conversations. In earlier conversations, Bob wanted to limit them to an hour, so we're just heading into the last ten minutes of this one.
Yeah, and, and again, we don't wanna set an unofficial time frame, put out the same token, you know, the talk will refresh, and at the same token, at some point, we do start to repeat ourselves.
That redundancy was to the point.
Yes.
Uh, well, I just wanna acknowledge, you know, Conan said that she can't be here on November first. I don't know if we wanna.
Well, I think we should continue, we'll probably go to the fifteenth as well and, and keep going on this, uh, again, until, you know, until we're exhausted or until we get something, um, perhaps we can get together with, uh, you know, the town board again on this, on this issue. I, I suspect that might come up. I don't think there'll be any interest in the town board, uh, talking about this before Election Day. Uh, this is crazy time, and, um.
So it would be good if, uh, we get that call, we have our thoughts formulated.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, they have some thoughts now, but again, uh, and I thought they're useful, but, um, I, I think it would be better for us to cultivate what we did tonight a little bit better, because it'll make it more understandable. We can explain it better to the town board.
Okay.
I, I, I don't feel equipped that I, I could explain so, all the nuances that we discussed this evening. I think they're pretty complex, and they're, they're very sophisticated, and, uh, I think they're really important and really good. So, with that, is there, okay?
Sorry, I was gonna say, I will definitely try to be there, uh, but my assist, I'm gonna have a niece on November first, so there is very high likelihood that I will be.
Congratulations.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, yeah, um, but I will circulate what I, what I can write up, um.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Terrific. Great. All right, with that, is there a motion to close the meeting?
No move.
Second, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.